We are recording. So if I could call tonight's meeting to order, it's the special meeting for the presentation of the FY 2019 audit. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. If I could ask Stacy to please call the roll.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, councilman at large here.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, council at large here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky, first district present.
Councilwoman William X Conlon. I believe is absent. Councilwoman Liz Johnston. Councilman Mitch Galagnano.
Councilman Mitch Galagnano, fourth district present.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton, fifth district present.
Peter Mazzaro.
Councilman Peter Mazzaro, sixth district present.
Councilwoman Trane McGee.
Trane McGee, seventh district present.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli. I believe is absent. Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, ninth district present.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen, tenth district present.
And Chairman Ron Quagliani.
Councilman Ron Quagliani, councilor at large, present.
Stacy?
Yep.
Alrighty. Next up is if the clerk could read a call of the special meeting.
West Haven City Council Agenda Notice of Special Meeting Wednesday, May 6, 2020. Notice: Mayor Nancy R. Rossi has called a special meeting which will be held at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 6, 2020. This meeting will be held via electronics method in accordance with Rule Number 30. Please visit the City of West Haven's YouTube channel to go watch the meeting live. The purpose of this meeting is to, is a review of the City of West Haven's audit for fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Thank you, Stacy. Now we'll have the presentation of the audit. I will hand it over to Mayor Rossi. Mayor, would you like to start it off or would you like to hand it off to?
No, I'm just glad that you all could. I thought it was important for the council to be able to ask questions for the auditor. Myself and Frank have asked some. Doesn't mean we won't come up with some new ones tonight. But we, we've seen this presentation a few times now and honestly have spent a lot of time with it. So, but I think it's important that the council understand and be able to ask questions. So that's all I'd say. Lotterer can take it away.
All right. Does everyone have the presentation? I'm just going to use this to kind of walk through the highlights of the audit. So we're going to talk about the financial statements, the federal state single audit, our recommendations, provided required communications. We'll talk about some of the additional work that we did. We'll talk about what, what Gatsby's up to lately. On page three, the notable items in 2009 report, general fund fund balance increased by almost $2.8 million. Education Department was overspent by $566,000. We'll talk more about that. It was a prior period adjustment, which is on page 80 for the general fund that totaled about $3.6 million. Again, we'll talk more about that. Your ending unassigned fund balance at year end was to $1.358 million. And there is a subsequent event, no, in there related to COVID-19 and the impact it, which is unknown, it may have on, on the 20 budget and the 21 budget. So page four, the opinion on the financial statements is on pages two and four in the financials. The section headings detail the level of our responsibilities. So the opinions on the financial statements is the unmodified opinions, which is the type of opinion that you're looking to get. For some of the other information, the report, the required supplementary information, we give limited assurance for the supplemental information we give in relation to opinion, meaning in the schedules in the back are in relation to the financials are fairly stated. introductory section, the trend information, we don't, we don't give any responsibility for. Great. So on page five, management discussion analysis is on page five through 13. This is a good executive summary of the financial highlights and discussion of changes as compared to the prior year. I definitely recommend everybody read MDNA because it will give you a good overview of changes. So on page five is the financial highlights. So it talks about operations and the prior period. And then on pages 11, it talks about general fund budgetary highlights. So any changes in the budget, any variances. On page 11 also talks about the upper operations for Allentown and the sewer fund, which both had good years. So we'll look at those details and then capital assets and long-term liability changes. So any significant asset additions or changes in debt, either up or down are discussed. On page six, exhibit C in the financial statements, focusing on, on the general fund, again, you know, assigned fund balance was the $1,359,000. It was on page 17. So your unassigned fund balance at this point is just a little bit under 1%. There was the prior period adjustments and for unrecorded accounts payable. And the little chart breaks down, 3.3 was related to education. The city is 145. There were some deficit fund balances that got cleaned up in a grants fund for about $50,000. And then some withholding account adjustments for the $132,000. We'll talk a little bit more about that at the end as far as the procedures that generated that information. On page seven is, is an overview of the general fund operations. So as mentioned, it's almost a $2.8 million net increase in fund balance for the year. And that basically was generated. And we'll look at details submitted that revenues were less than budgeted by about 2.1 million. Spending savings was about 4.1 million. You had a positive budget variance for other financing sources and uses, about $745,000 generated your increase. On page eight, a little bit more detail of what generated the differences. So revenues were under budget by $2 million. And that's basically because you budgeted $8 million for more money and you only received $5 million. So that was the majority of that difference. Spending savings were in the following categories. The general government was about 2.2, public safety, half a million dollars, benefits and insurance are under about 1.4, and then education was overspent by the 566. Page nine, Allentown Fire Department operations. Again, this is on exhibit D. So you had a net increase in fund balance of the $1,342,000. And you had, when ending with a fund balance of $1.2 million. So you eliminated the deficit that you had in, in the prior year and now you have a $1.2 million $1.2 million fund balance. Again, looking at where, where that came from, looking at the budgetary statements on 86 and 88, revenues exceeded the budget by $668,000. And that was primarily from property taxes received in excess of the budget. And the spending savings of about $674,000. And that primarily came from under expenditure or related to personnel expenditures. On page 10, the sewer fund operations, again, exhibit D, net increase in fund balance was the $1,457,000. The revenues were pretty much on just $95,000 in excess of what your estimates were. Expenditures were less than anticipated. And the debt service contingency, sewer capital improvements, equipment maintenance, and collection systems were the biggest areas that, that contributed to that net increase in fund balance. Page 11 is, is just a, a different perspective to kind of look at the net cost of services. So the first column is the total expenditures by these different functions of, of the city. And then the revenues that relate to those functions are shown. And the last column shows what the net, the net cost is, what basically that is funded with taxes and grants and investment income. Again, generating that $2.7 million increase in fund balance that we talked about earlier. Page 12, our analysis of the internal service funds. So just to compare 2018 to 2019, your claims payable went down slightly. Your charges, your revenue went down a half a million dollars. The claims went down 237. But you did end up with positive operations of the $200,000 this year, ending in that position of the $9.7 million deficit. So just breaking down that $200,000 into your different types of things yourself insuring for. So you have medical and positive operations of 122, general liability of the 127, workers comp. Almost break even at $50,000 decrease in that position. So we, we like to look at internal service funds. A good measure is current ratio. So do you have enough assets to pay current liabilities? We're normally looking for a target of one to say that you have that. So for medical, you're about halfway there, general liability and workers' compensation. Basically don't have any assets and you're really running those programs as pay as you go, being basically funded by the general fund. Page 14, is the pension funds. So the activity, change in that position for the police plan was a decrease of $473,000. Change in fair value was about 489,000. So basically you're, you're having to use resources to pay benefits. So that's, that's what, what that's showing. For Allentown, change in that position was 843,000. And, and the change in fair value was only 347,000. So they put that plan, additional monies were put in to, 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 to fund that. And we'll look at what the funding is. So for expenses, just for perspective, the city, they increased $283,000 as compared to prior year. For Allentown, they increased approximately $251,000. On page 15 shows your funding percentages. So for the city, the police plan, you're at 86%, almost up a percent from last year. Annual rate of return is just, just under 4%. For Allentown, the funding percentage is about 26%. You did have a better annual rate of return. Depending on how long the plan's been out there, a good benchmark is somewhere in the, in the 80s. So for the city plan, you're, you're in good shape, even though with the pension bonds, you might be a little bit behind. But Allentown is, is definitely significantly underfunded and hopefully they continue to have good operations and can address by, address that underfunding by putting in additional additional contributions. So on page 16 is just, just to give you perspective of where your discount rate as compared to what, what's your average return? We're just using six years worth of average because that's the data that's available, that's, that's in the RSI report on the RSI 2A and 3A. So over the six-year span, you, you, your investment mix has generated slightly more than, than your discount rate. So that's a good position to be in. Again, looking at Allentown, the six return is 3.5%. And they're using a discount rate of 6.75%. So over the last six years, and again, actually you may look at that over a longer term, but you're not, that plan is not generating enough investment income based upon that discount rate, which is going to decrease the, the funding level because it'll increase the liability. So that's again, something to pay attention to, to look at that investment mix of, to be able to get the 6.75% discount rate that's being used. Page 17 is just a perspective for, for some of the other plans, just to give you just because the question asked quite a bit. So just giving you some other towns and seeing where you fit in with some other similar sized towns and and then to show you where Allentown is kind of on the low end of those plans. Page 18, for OPAB, so you did establish trusts right at the end of the fiscal year. In June of 19, there was no contribute, no contribution made for the June 19 fiscal year, but you have budgeted money in, in the 2020 year. So liability for the city is, is almost $200 million. It's up, you know, from the 183 from the prior year. And Allentown's is $28 million, which is up just under $3 million from the prior year.
So we also issued a short report including the federal and state single audit reports. Our testing for the federal single audit resulted in an unmodified opinion on compliance, which is the opinion. The schedule of federal money spent on pages six, seven of this report totaled almost $9.2 million. We also identified the programs tested in this report on page 10, which were child nutrition and Title I. On the next slide, we noted in our report that there were audit findings identified, including a repeated finding for the city of segregation duties for the payroll process. The education department's segregation duties payroll funding is new, and also the material weakness year-end cash disbursement finding is also new. As far as the segregation of duties, we recommend segregating entering personnel payroll rates versus the payroll processing system. And also the year-end cash dispersments, we recommended implementing a process to charge expenditures to fiscal year as they were incurred. For the next slide, we talk about the state single audit. This also resulted in an unmodified opinion. Schedule of state money spent on pages 18 through 19 totaled approximately $92.64 million. We identified the several programs tested on page 23, which included outdoor recreation and also local transportation capital improvement programs. These are non-f贈 grants, but the rest are also listed on page 23. The first three findings on the next slide are just repeated from the federal single audit as well. The new one to note was the child daycare monitoring related to state single audit compliance. This was to a pass-through grant. We have provided the city with details on how to address this as well. On the next slide, we talk about our required communications with those charged governance. This is a separate letter issued. It identifies the significant accounting estimates which were tested as part of the audit process. This included the net pension and OPAB liabilities, the workers' compensation liability, and the heart and hypertension liability. In this letter, we also note that the disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, that we received managerial representations in a separate letter that were signed for management. And we state that there are no uncorrected misstatements identified. And the correctness that were, there were audit adjustments that were corrected by management. The material audit adjustments are listed in Schedule A that was attached to this letter. We also confirm that we remain independent of the city. And the next slide, we're referring to recommendations that we issued in a separate letter that resulted from the audit. This slide refers to material weaknesses, significant deficiencies that we've already discussed. We just put these here in the recommendation letter so that they're all in one document, referred back to. On the next slide, we mentioned the new recommendations, including the city's account reconciliation process related to a prior period adjustment that occurred this year. And just in regards to withholding accounts and reconciling these accounts on a monthly basis. For Allentown's pension funds, we recommend only benefits and benefit payments and administrative costs be paid from this fund. On the next slide, we're referring to best practices that we also recommend. In this letter, we recommended formally documenting in the minutes the suspense transfers and the total amount of the budget approved, since auditors rely on the minutes for these, for the documented approvals of these. Also for the next one, financial system permissions, access controls or rights, we recommended reviewing all system permissions and limit access by employee responsibilities, and also ensuring that transactions are processed under specific user IDs. We also noted in, for prior recommendation, that some of these were resolved during this year's audit. And we noted thirteen recommendations were removed from this current year report. And these are listed on the bottom of page nine of the recommendation letter that we've issued.
All right. On the next page, just talk about some of the additional procedures that we performed. Did expand our subsequent disbursement testing. We selected invoices that are charged to the 20 budget for both city and education to review to make sure they're in the right period. So we do this as in the normal course of an audit. And then if, if you do find exceptions, then we would expand that testing. And that's what happened in this case. We did also just look at utilities and similarly monthly vendors to make sure that all those invoices were current, you know, within one month of your end to make sure again they're being paid from the right budget. The next page, the results of that, were there some unrecorded liability amounts noted? There were invoices with unpaid balances noted. In addition to the invoices, there, there were prior amounts that hadn't been paid. Education Department and looking at the utilities for electricity and waste disposal, there was only 11 months of expenditures when we would expect that there would be 12 months for those types of things. So this generated some current year and prior period adjustments, as we had mentioned, and that finding that Katie just talked about regarding the education department and cutoff procedures. So finding 2019 dash three. Next page, we also reviewed payroll withholding accounts. So we reviewed and tested and ending balances of the withholding accounts by review and payments made in fiscal year 20. Because these are transactional and normally they would clear at least on a monthly basis in most cases. So again, this generated some current and prior year adjustments to adjust those with the correct balances are and, and generated the recommendation that, that we just discussed. We also looked at deficit fund balances and related accounts receivable. Again, just to look at items that might need to be addressed in, in doing that in the DEP grant fund. We looked at revenue and expenditure history. We looked at grant agreements. We've done our five projects with deficits. And basically we did find it was, it was only $50,000, but that there is an adjustment related to that. So for expenditures that it was, that had been made years ago, that there hadn't been a grant requested or there was no grant history. So that was settled up in, in this year's audits. So don't have to worry about that going forward. Next slide, the future considerations. Gatsby, nothing seems to slow Gatsby down. The only good news coming out of Gatsby lately is, is that they're looking at deferring for one year, implementation of some of these standards. So anything that's due in '20 and '21 and '22, everything will get pushed one year. The big standard to pay attention to is you'll get to be 87 for leases. So that's going to require that all leases get recorded as an asset and a liability on the financial statements. Currently, that's only true for capital leases. You know, that will change for copiers or if you rent a parking lot or if you rent office space. So any lease now is going to be an asset for right to use and a liability. So we've been recommending that all our clients start building that database. So when they have to implement that standard, they will have all the data that, that's necessary to be able to do that. That's the only significant item that will apply to the city that, that's listed on this page. And that will conclude our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions of the audit? Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, is your name correct? Joe?
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Hi. I, I, in the beginning of the presentation, and if I missed it, I apologize. You had mentioned some, some concerns or some things to look out for in terms of COVID. What, you know, we, nobody has a crystal ball, but you had mentioned about, you had given some, some, some information, if you will, in the report. Can you just give us a little bit of information from your perspective? I, you know, between the 20 and 21 years, what we should be looking at or be concerned about from a financial standpoint?
Yeah, the disclosure is on page 80, and that just basically says, this is out there and we don't know what's going to happen. But the, the concerns are for most towns is looking at cash flows, depending. I didn't look at what specific option that the city selected, whether it's a low interest program or the deferment program. But cash flow is, is, is the biggest concern of, of, of most communities, just not knowing what's going to come in, in, in July and then what's going to come in, in August and how that lines up with your debt service payments and, and that type of thing. Certainly are expecting decreases in, in some items. Other types of fees and building permits may be impacted. Just people aren't doing those, aren't doing building projects. So it's just kind of looking at looking at those type of things and, and projecting maybe that they may not hit budget in '20. Although we, we had almost nine months before it was kicked in. And then '21, how does that carry over? And obviously, like you said, there's a lot of unknowns. If we start to open up on May 20 and what that looks like and how that changes some of this. The other area that we look at or we recommend look at, and I'm, I'm on the board of finance of my town, so I'm looking at this just like you're looking at it, is how's it going to impact us? You know, the state was declared a disaster area, so FEMA does apply. So looking at what your incremental costs, whether it be overtime or cleaning supplies or that, just tracking that information so that if that 75% or more reimbursements available, that you, you have gathered all that information of what the incremental costs are of, of trying to manage around the COVID-19.
And I have to apologize, Joe, because I, I don't have the report. So I know it's on page 80, so I'm going to ask this follow-up question anyway.
Okay.
Is you mentioned as one of the things to look out for was the building permits. And, and I'm just wondering, you know, we've never had a pin. This is a whole, whole new ballgame. And if you were to compare, and it's probably not a fair comparison, between the 2008 recession or downturn, if you will, in terms of building permits and so forth versus, can you give us some idea about we might be looking for an increase, decrease? Is there any correlation at all? And I know it's probably an unfair question, but territory for all of us. So if you can, if you have a comment on that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would, I don't have your 2008 report here, so I don't really have a, a perspective. But hopefully this is mostly delayed unless, you know, people have been unemployed, they might not do some projects. So I, I, I don't really have a way to estimate that, that impact. But, you know, right now, nobody wants somebody they don't know at their house, I guess, unless they could be outside all the time. So it is, it is, it's going to I would expect it to impact it some, but hopefully that's a delay and, and maybe you catch up better near. But again, it, that, like you said, it's new territory. So you just don't know how that's going to flow. It's just something. Better near, but again, it that, like you said, it's new territory, so you just don't know how that's going to flow. It's just something. It's going to need, you know, increased monitoring as compared to what you had a monitor in prior years.
Yeah, so I, so you can't really give a percent and that that's fair. I just figured I'd ask, it was kind of um, just there and I have, well, I already asked you questions, so I'm going to um, defer. Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer for somebody else. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Joe, I have, I have one question. I I know that the um. The findings, the segregation of duties and the year-end cash dispersment, so I know that the city has worked. Very hard on. On the segregation of duties piece, and I believe that that issue is. If if not resolved, close to resolution. Um. Frank or Mayor, maybe you could respond to the, to the year-end cash dispersments. Has there been a uh, something put in place to to rect- rectify that finding as well?
I've had conversations with the Board of Education. And um, Matt and I are going to work together um. Especially at year end uh, to make sure that everything he does is being captured correctly and that um. All the bills are being processed uh, on time and accurately.
Thank you, Frank. Is there anyone else that has any questions of the auditor, Frank, or the mayor regarding the twenty nineteen audit? Treasurer last.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure the the city council got to ask questions. Uh, I didn't want to. Go before my my turn, but I appreciate you allowing me to be uh, part of the meeting. A couple of things, just on, just some. Notices, it's nice, uh, Joe, to see some positive fund balances for a change. Uh, we've been at this for a long time. And uh, you know, especially the Allentown Fire Department. Uh, we struggled, I don't think they had a a positive fund balance since they came over to the city. And uh, you know, in one year, uh, now they have a pretty healthy fund balance and I I think they're on the right track. You know, as is the sewer fund and and hopefully the general fund will will continue. Um, one of my my questions, though, were on OPEB because OPEB always makes me nervous and uh. You know, I ask these questions all the time. For years, they were starting to phase in the liability on the balance sheet for OPEB. Um, is that two hundred and twenty-six million between the city and and the Allentown Fire Department, is that? The total liability or or is there still a phase in?
Probably, so if you have assets. Again, if you accumulate some assets, but yes, that, right now, that's the total net. They they kind of had. This this half rule, like you said, it was phased again, you booked some of it and and then. A a couple of years ago, and they said, okay, we're we're going to have everybody book all of it so that it's in the financials. The ratings knew what the numbers were for years, so that, you know, now it's just on the financials versus they were always using that. In 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 part of their evaluation anyway.
So, so imagine. In the future. Contributing towards your their retirement health. Is that, do you think that, in your opinion, is that a good practice to try to build up the trust fund?
Yes, that's, that's. Additional contribute. Do make sense, so two hundred twenty-six million dollars, that that's. A lot of money, I mean, that's not really fundable. The other thing is to look at capping the benefit. You don't have to necessarily eliminate it, but. But if if the benefit's capped at a certain dollar amount, that will reduce your liability also, so it's okay to cities willing to help, but. For single, we're only going to help up to five thousand dollars for families, you know, just looking at, so to look at both sides, if you can manage the expense. And get additional revenue, obviously, you're going to get to a a better place a lot faster.
And one final question, if it's okay with the chairman. With the the Board of Ed, the the year-end accrual, uh, three point two million. Do you think that's going to be a normal, the normal size of pool at the end of the year, or do you think that was bigger? Uh, maybe there was more than one month of of cool in that, uh, latch.
Yeah, the. The the accrual now, everything you're lined up, so for. So from an accrual perspective, it should be a lower number because that was more than one month. So when we look at, when you get to June thirty twenty. We should be, you know, the big numbers are tuition and transportation, so you would expect only to see whatever the June bills are. That you're going to pay in July, so the number should be a lot lower. This year than than it was last year.
Which which is good news for us and good news for our budget.
Right.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Is there any other council members that have a question for the auditor? Any anybody have any questions for the auditor? Councilman Cohen, are you all set?
I think the mayor wants to speak unless you, oh, I saw a hand wave. Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm going to be brief. I just. Uh, Joe Santafani for um, all of his help through this process. It's been a pleasure working with him and his team. This has been a pretty difficult process uh, with the audit and we got it done and um. I appreciate all that, all the work that was put in by his team and how responsive he was whenever we needed something, not only. For myself, but I don't want to speak for Frank, but Frank al- also, you know. Um, had been in contact with them and also the MARB member, so there was a lot of different contacts and I appreciate the information and how quickly it was given to us.
Good mayor. Any other council members have any questions to the auditor? I am not seeing any hands. Oh, sorry, you're behind my control panel, Councilman Masaro, go go right ahead.
Fayers, I'm always behind you. It's all right. Joe, I got one question. When it when it now. Pension with the fire department. That pension is the uh, smallest pension out of everything because it only covers about. Eight or nine guys in the department, uh, because the new guys are getting on our 401Ks. And the guys be, there's only two guys before that. That are on the line item pension. So that pension, when we first started back in two thousand and six, only had two hundred seventy thousand dollars in. From two thousand and six until now, uh, that's what we. Accumulated in savings over the years. The reason why that pension is small is a smaller amount, to be honest with you, when we're very, we were always very conservative on that pension. So uh. I mean, as far as we could see, when I was there, it was doing very, very well. And uh, you're. Kind of. Looking at it against the police department's pension, there's no way, because the police department's got a lot more money than than that pension.
Right, yeah, we're we're just comparing what you have to to what the actuary says you have to come up with eventually, so. So we're just kind of reporting the information, it's not really, we're not doing any evaluation of it other than. The actuary says you still have thirty million dollars, their total liability is thirty and you have eight million dollars, so. And then the percentage funded is just, it's just the difference. But if you've got it, you know, like you said, from. From two seventy up to eight million, that's that's, that's a lot of progress.
Yeah, but the actuary is taking the whole pension as a whole. Uh, theoretically, there's different pensions there. And that that's, that's what I mean. It's taking, the actuary is taking that whole pension as a whole, where part of it. Something like two million dollars of it is a line item constant every every year. And that's where they're they're taking most of the money, the rest of it is. The guys are there and some guys are on 401Ks, which shouldn't even include them.
Right, well, I mean, that that's, that's an option is 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 definitely to go back and look at the data that you're sending the actuary and make sure that some of that. You know, make sure that's clear that only the people that are are in the pension are are getting. Reported, if if they're they're now going to be funded with the 401K or the defined contribution or some other way. So that would be a step that you can take and and maybe that changes the number, but. It's 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 definitely worth taking a look at if 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 the numbers are. Making sense to you. As far as, is there, they're reacting to whatever data is provided by the cities in their calculations.
Yeah, because if you take the guys that are retired, if there are three of us is retired. That would be close to a thirty, close to a thirty million dollar deficit, because it's been in deficit since I got on the. Day one, and that's forty years ago. I mean, we could not bond like the city did for this, the police department pension, we couldn't do that, so we had to build it that way, then it became a line item. After everybody retired, so if you refer, if you look at it with the thirty-three guys that are retired now. That's where that thirty million dollar deficit comes from.
That makes sense.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Councilman Masaro. Um, Joe, I just have a. Housekeeping question, so one of the recommendations, it says um. Uh, city council minutes, city council approvals uh, for suspense transfers. Total budget, what would you, so. Which part was lacking, the the actual total?
Yeah, just just having the number memorialized in the minutes, because it just says you approve the list. But then when we go to try to audit, the tax collectors report on what they did, we don't know what the number is that you approved. So we're just looking to say you approved suspense transfers of two hundred thousand, and at least I have a benchmark to know. When I look at what they posted, that that it's not more than two hundred thousand.
Thank you all. I see the clerk taking notes on that, so we should be good going forward.
Great.
Councilwoman Hosky.
Hi, so I've kind of been sitting here debating about my question. Um, because I know this report is just going to June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. But one of the things that I see that you recommended, right? And I'm just going to read it and you can kind of possibly tell me, it says, we recommend the Education Department follow the generally. Accepted accounting principles that require expenditures for goods and services received. Before the physical year end but are paid for after the physical year end be recorded as accounts payable. And it also says, we also recommend that invoices be properly recorded to the proper physical year as they are. Processed to ensure the accounts payable is properly recorded. To increase efficiency and allow for proper monitoring, reporting of the general fund's budget status. So. This year, we had something occur where. Um, I'm going to say that I was told that we could, somebody could put in a request, a PO and possibly purchase. A Porsche. And drive away on the Porsche, and we would never know that Porsche was purchased. Is your recommendation? Going to help us with that? Is that, does that cover us? People being able to purchase things and then us finding out a year later that we have a problem? After your audit, but I'm wondering if you guys pick, if that would fix that?
Um. One control that address that is if you required purchase orders, be. Approved ahead of, ahead of the purchase, so it. You know, that's the normal, doesn't happen like that everywhere, so if the purchase order has to be approved by. The mayor or the superintendent, then they would see what what somebody's looking to buy and and that's where it would stop. If someone doesn't go through that process. You know, in theory, when the invoices are getting. Paid, that would be the second opportunity to say, well, what is this for? Where is this in the budget and and should we be purchasing this? So. The comment is more. This comment is more related to timing as far as. Put things in into the right period, because a lot of times things were. Charged to the new budget when they related to the old budget, and some of it was moved, but not all of it. But those would be the the two controls, the purchase order approval part, and then the second. Part of where we're asked to sign that invoice, saying, yeah, we got this and this is something. Should have purchased would be the two points of control that would identify purchases that you shouldn't. That may maybe don't don't, shouldn't have been made.
Okay, so this isn't, so you hadn't delved into or. Didn't review the. Purchase order process on our behalf. It it just wasn't part of the school, and that's fine. That wasn't.
Yeah, as part of testing this, we didn't, we were focused on are things in the right period, so we were looking, was a PO issued for this first and then it was paid. It was more focused just as is it in the right periods? We just looked at invoices and not purchase orders. That generated this recommendation.
So is there a um. Am I echoing? I apologize. Is there a government? Um, accounting standard on how that should be done and how we should follow it? Like, is there somewhere we could go to where saying? You know, all of your recommendations are based off of that, is there somewhere there that can educate us on the best practice for that?
Um, the best practice for. Purchasing or?
Or the whole, what I was saying, how you. We essentially. Our process needs to change and it needs to be a little bit tighter and efficient. I'm just wondering if there's. All these government accounting standards that you reference. Is there somewhere we could go? I could go to read up on that and see what it says.
This this process is more of an internal control process, so if you looked up internal control over cash dispersments, it's not necessarily a. You know, generally accepted accounting principle, that type of thing, it's more of a best practice, so if you. So if you were going to look at it, it'd be cash dispersment, best practices, that that type of thing, or cash dispersments, internal controls. Um, but that's, those are, they're not mandated by. Generally accepted accounting principles or 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 those type of things, so we do evaluate internal controls from. From a big picture, but it's 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 against the best practice or against no weaknesses of segregation or invoices that are approved or. Uh, purchases that are budget type thing, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from council on the audit? Second time, any? Questions or comments from the council on the audit? I don't see anybody. So at this point, I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Hosky, seconded by Councilman Donovan. And Councilwoman O'Connor, all in favor? Many? We are adjourned. Joe, Mayor, Frank, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
All right, everybody.